Holding this meeting virtually this evening to the council's very wise decision that due to the pandemic that we're all been living through for almost a year now that this is the more prudent way to hold the meetings at least for this moment. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. And then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Join if you care to. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For what it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Who would have thought? Okay, next item, we do have a couple of announcements and presentations I'm seeing on the agenda. So the first one we have is the Shambly Doorville CID. Mayor, we have, I believe Josh Harrison is here to present for this. Okay, good. Welcome, Josh.
Might take just a moment to get him on.
Does Josh have a screen or do we know, or is it we're gonna, we control the screen, Chris?
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, we got you, bud. Take it away.
Excellent. Sorry, I think I had to be unmuted by somebody else. Well, thanks, y'all. I appreciate some time to talk to you all this evening. And I know you've got a full agenda, so hopefully my remarks will be brief, but I'm really here tonight in my role as both vice chairman of the Shambly Doorville CID and as your appointed board member to the CID. And with me on the call is Malaika Rivers. I don't know if you all have had the opportunity to meet Malaika. Malaika is our executive director. Malaika served close to two decades doing that same job for the very successful Cumberland CID. And frankly, as a, as a young board, I think our single most critical decision was figuring out who to hire to run that's the CID for us. And Malaika has been fantastic. He was very involved in our original formation efforts. And I think getting her on board was one of our major accomplishments in our first few months. So Malaika will be here to provide me support if y'all answer anything I don't know. If y'all will advance the slide, please. So, you know, what is the CID that's great? And I know you guys are familiar with them, but CID is community improvement districts. The phrase I always use is it's something that allows commercial property owners to have a little bit of a amplified and collective voice back to certain issues in their community. Obviously, CID's allow commercial property owners to improve public realm, public assets such as transportation networks, et cetera, by pooling money, partnering with governments to advance these projects. Different CID's will take on different areas of focus. Our CID is largely taken on mobility, obviously, transportation network within our community, broader Shambly Doorville community is key. And so mobility has really been the area where we've focused. And I think as I go through the slides, you'll see that. Who is our CID? Very well timed switch on the slides there. So there are eight board members in total. Three appointed board members, myself as your city of Shambly appointee, Matt Oppenheimer for the city of Doorville. And Mario Evans as the DeKalb County Government appointee. And then five elected CID board members. These, the eighth that you see here on this list were all eight originally elected. It's elected by the members of the, the property owners that are covered within the CID. And they're now all on sort of variety of terms that will end up with each person ultimately serving a three-year term and sort of having staggered rolling cycles. Great group of people led by Mr. Jimmy Ellis as our chair. As you can see, you've got a couple of automotive representatives, some very key active developers and property owners in and around the area. It's an honor to serve this group of people. We do meet on the first Wednesday of every month. And I'm sure those are a lot of names that y'all see, recognize. Great group of folks and I'm excited about working with them. If you'll switch the slide, this is, Malaika likes to refer to this as our Swiss cheese CID map, but the parcels in blue are the more, the parcels that are included within our original boundaries for the CID. The CID includes 155 taxpaying parcels. And I'll point out, you know, our revenues, which are set based on a military set by the board once a year currently set at five mills. We are taxed, you can only add that on to commercial property owners. It doesn't go on to any tax exempt parcels, multifamily or residential parcels. So that's why you see that host of exempt parcels. The total budget based on the $186 million assessed value for those parcels, you can see roughly works out to between $700, $750,000 in annual revenue. I will point out, you see a slight dip in 21. That's not because we're shrinking our boundaries, but that is because, as I'm sure you all share, we are concerned about some property decrease in values based on the pandemic. We have not sought to expand our boundaries yet, although that is something that is possible and something that we would strongly consider in the future. But thus far, we've been really focused on setting the needs to the area rather than just looking to expand. Next slide, please. So when we formed in sort of summer, fall of 19, one of the first things to really hit our board's desk was the managed lane plans and the fact that the state DOT was out starting to take feedback from the public broadly, broadly speaking. And we really felt a coordinated effort on behalf of the business owners in and around the Shambly Doorville community was important. Obviously, this managed lane project will interact a great deal with the primary corridors. One of the things that the state DOT is not thinking about or not responsible for is better way to say that is how these improvements will interact with our local street network. So what the CID did is engage Kimberly Horn to really sort of act as an owner's rep for the CID boundaries, working with DOT, working with stakeholders, city doorbell, city Shambly folks to really give some key feedback in stage of the process that was early enough to really maybe change some directions. One of the key things that came out of this, I think, was working with Assembly and coordinating some of the access points really adjacent to through and around Assembly to make sure that sort of the central business district of Shambly and other key properties were easily accessed. So I think that was a good example of the timing being well orchestrated such that we were able to get involved and work with the DOT to get some feedback to them early on. Next slide, please. Another thing we've been working on, and this is really a great example where our CID is taking less of a leadership role and maybe so more of a secondary supporting role. But obviously, as a part of those managed lane programs, there are a group of seven cities along the top end, as well as three other CID's that have studied and really working to advance both the BRT, which is something I know Mayor Clarkson's very passionate about, as well as regional trail network along the top and perimeter improvements. That's something that we've been happy to support leadership efforts by the city of Port Haven and others supporting through certainly being a voice and also just with dollars from our budget to support those efforts. I think it's one of the key things for those of us that are day to day in a business role is to learn where, where to lead and where to provide that support role. And so we wanted to talk about this as, as an example of where we are happy to take a backseat to the great efforts of others. The next page really is sort of a great example of what our biggest work product to date has been, and that's our mobility master plan. Our mobility master plan, not unlike the one that y'all adopted back in May of 19, was prepared by Stan Tech. They were obviously a great hire, very efficient, knowledgeable in and around the area, but from your plan, Buford Highway LCI study. And they helped us go through our concerns and mobility master plan, ultimately identified approximately 28 projects, total value roughly $22 million, of which you, we $700,000 a year budget. So narrowing that down, we really slated eight is what I would call our priority projects where we're going to spend our time, energy and efforts over the next few years. I've got an example of a couple of those. We are still in the process very early of working through that. But those eight priority projects are really, as I said, where we're gonna start putting our efforts moving forward. So I've selected two of the eight to kind of show you what we're working on. And again, a lot of these do cross pollinate with plans that you guys have adopted as well. Rather than getting into a lot of the details on these, because I know that's probably time, a better time and place for that. I pointed out a couple of these just to give some key things that I think are important. One, for me, this one is a great example of how our CID and the board have recognized how important it is to work with all of our key stakeholders, constituents. This is the the Shallowford Road Buford Highway intersection, obviously, one that you will probably recognize as being an intersection that shares borders with both the city of Shambly and the city of Doorville. So there is a significant coordination here. The other thing that I love about this, and I think it's important to point out that our board realizes, you know, when you think about efficient mobility, you think about it from a commercial property owner standpoint. I think a lot of people immediately think cars and road improvements. And I, and I wanted to pause on this one and point out that our board recognizes that a big part of that of mobility in any region is not just cars, but do include some things related to pedestrian and bike safety improvements. You can see a lot of examples on this project of that. This is an opportunity where the next phase of this project would be advancing a draft concept report. This is one where we believe there are some partner funding opportunities where we could take a CID contribution of something like $20,000 towards that draft concept report. I know that's something that I believe both cities are working on advancing. The next project. The next project, while she flips to it, is a intersection I know we all know well, perhaps too well. This is the Peachtree Road, North Shallowford Road Motors Industrial sort of network spaghetti network of difficult intersection that we believe from a business property, commercial property standpoint, and really just overall mobility of anyone into and out of our area could stand for some safety and traffic machination improvements. I think one key update here, and the reason I wanted to focus on this, not to get involved in the actual picture and any of the improvements, because again, the next step here will be to advance that draft concept report. But we have met with DOT, obviously, Route 141 being right through there. They will have a key role in this process. The good news is District Seven representatives that we spoke with were, I would say, highly energetic and enthusiastic, excited about this project. And from my perspective, our perspective, the other thing that I thought was a positive takeaway from that is they do believe and agree that this project is one that would be best locally led as opposed to state DOT led. So I think that hopefully allows us to really engage with stakeholders in and around that area to make sure that we can improve this the right way. Again, next step on all of our well, of the eight priority projects that we've identified, we will take a handful, three, four, and get to advancing the draft concept report. One of the things I was going to close with was just make sure that y'all are aware, we will give you, if you haven't seen already, we will circulate our master mobility plan. So you've got it. But these were two, I thought, good representative projects. The other thing, if you'll, next slide that I wanted to touch on, we are in addition to some of these larger, massive lengthy projects, we are looking for opportunities to make a more immediate impact. One of the examples that comes to mind is the Connected Vehicle Technology Program. I know you guys are well aware of it. I'll give you props for being leaders in this. I understand you're one of the cities that's fully adopted and worked through where you want to go with this direction, perhaps have already accounted for it in your budget for the year. Something that we're very excited about, A R C is championing this effort, getting connected intersections from the airport to Alpharetta. As a CID, this is one where, you know, we feel like our budget could make an immediate impact. So we are continuing to study and talk to John, the city, other areas to figure out ways we could partner, whether it's initial adoption or expanding that network of connected intersections as it grows. So that's just a good example of some of the easier to implement, less timely projects that we're sort of studying. I wanted to, again, just thank you all for sort of bringing you up to speed with what we've been doing for the last 18 months. The CID was formed in part through the formal adoption you guys did back in 2019. From a personal perspective, I'm honored to work with the city and be your appointed board member. As I said, it's a great group of people and we're excited about making changes that will make this already great area even better. We always talk about sort of the three phases of a project, planning, committing, and then executing as we get sort of get away from the planning and into the commitment and execution phase of all this, we recognize that our relationships with our key stakeholders, with our cities, with our counties, with, with other folks, state agencies, et cetera. Those relationships become even more important. And so I thought it was a great time to just update you on to as to what the CID has been working on. And to just let you know, we are excited about what we've got going. If you do want to follow us, we've got LinkedIn, fairly active posting on LinkedIn. There is a website there. As I said, when we're done, I'll make sure that we send each of you, it's not light reading, you would know that, a copy of our master mobility plan and also good contact information for myself and for Malaika. And that's really it. I thank you all for your time. And I know you've got a busy agenda, certainly happy to take questions. But that's what we've been up to. I'm learning very quickly that planning in real estate development and planning in municipal development are tough in their own ways, but I definitely respect what you guys do and how much work it takes to get projects to the starting line, let alone across the finish line. But we are excited about some of the things we're doing. So thank you, and I'll certainly take any questions that maybe y'all have.
Great. Thanks, Josh. I'll say, you know, in the interest of a long meeting, and I know you're very available, as is Malaika and others on the board. The council has a burning question, you know, that you need to have answered right at this moment. You know, just chime in real quick. But otherwise, I'll say thank you again, Josh. Appreciate it. Thank you, Malaika, for being on the call. I wish we could see you guys in person. Please tell Chairman Jimmy Ellis and the rest of the board, we appreciate all the hard work they're doing. And as you said, Josh, we, we look very forward to working with the CID to, to advance lots of things, not least of which the mobility improvements around our community. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the 2021 Discover DeKalb presentation.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor. I want to thank, again, this is James Sizmanakis with Discover DeKalb. It's different not being able to see each other. I want to thank all the mayor, city council for having us on and allowing us to update you. Also, we have, I guess, on speaking and on camera, we have Tim Mashoud, who is the Atlanta Marriott Northeast Emory area. I'm so used to saying Century Center, general manager. He's actually a board member of mine, and he's also the new chairman of the Shambly Marketing Advertising Committee that works exclusively with the Convention Visitor Bureau and Workhand and Glove together. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and start the presentation. We're gonna, we're gonna basically be talking about, and you can kind of go on to the next slide. The most important part, the most everyone seems to want to know about is how are we doing with COVID? So 2020, as we know, is not a normal year, but 2021 is kind of, we're, we're looking at it as another COVID year. We do hope and expect for the summer to be much busier, but you're going to get a snapshot of how the county did, and then we'll, we'll dive right into how Shambly's done. If you look at the occupancy for 2020, we ended the year down 12.2%, which was far better than what we originally planned. The A D R, average daily rate took a hit of 4.60%. But the part that's really the one that you, like, you take to the bank is RevPAR or Revenue Per Occupied Room, and that's down 25% in the county as a whole. The next slide, we're going to dive into Shambly. You see the Shambly occupancy is down almost 16% with the average daily rate down 17%. And again, the one that's the really money in the bank is the RevPAR, and it's down 30%. So when we started out the year, we budgeted, we took a budget cut of 80% for revenue because we just didn't know what it was going to be like. We didn't know how long we're not even going to have revenue coming in. So at the end, down 30% is far better than 80%, but 30% is still not where we want to be. And we go to the next slide. We have some goals that we started out in 2020. The biggest part, and this was remembering before COVID hit, we were looking at being able to actually advertise the awareness of Shambly as a destination for leisure travel, family reunions, corporate travel, culinary dining, outdoor rec and events. As we all know, as when March hit, corporate travel died, meetings, conventions died. The main focus had to really switch to dining, outdoor recreation. In dining, we hit heavily in curbside pickup, deliveries, areas like that. And the next slide, please. We dived into public relations. And you all will like this part. I actually hired a public relations firm the first of March, not knowing we were going to be in COVID by the middle of March, March. And they are actually a Shambly company. So their public relations is called Pineapple PR, based in Shambly, has done a phenomenal job, looks like Karen knows them, has done a phenomenal job working for us, working with us, and really getting the word about, about Shambly, getting the word out about our recreation opportunities with parks, dining, Buford Highway, things like that. And go to the next slide, please. And this is just a filler slide to get from one to the next, but I figured you all would like this because we are extremely excited for Mohammed's Hotel to open up in perimeter that gives us the first access into the perimeter area. So we're extremely excited about his Holiday Inn and Suites opening up and very much looking forward to that property. Next slide, please. We established something we've never done before. COVID really pushed us into looking at different things because the print area pretty much kind of went out the window in general. So Expedia, as we all know, is a major OTA booking engine. Everybody probably goes Expedia now. In the beginning of the 2020, Expedia was like extra money. It was not really our main focus. But as COVID occurred, we looked at Expedia as a primary major source of bringing business. We started looking at actually a co-op program to help our hotels out, to advertise individual hotels where we would do 50-50 split up to $250. Then come October, we actually dive straight into a campaign on Expedia. We had our own landing page. And if you look at this, three months, we spent a total of $30,000 in three months. We booked 4,196 rooms with 1,190 of those in Shambly only. And again, we spent 30,000, we brought in $382,000, we're actually 383 almost, $1,000 with 95,497 of that straight in again Shambly. So we feel like this was a great program and we can go on to the next slide. I said we weren't doing a lot of print. Actually, I said virtually no print, and that's still kind of the same. But we did feel like it was important from the committee's point of view to keep an ad that we had previously planned on in Atlanta Magazine because it was going to focus totally on the dining opportunities for Shambly, whether it's downtown Buford Highway, inside of Shambly. So that was an important mechanism because we're finding you gotta go eat, you stay in a hotel, restaurants unopened, you go out to eat. So it's a great piece for Shambly. Next, please. We also, we've always been heavily in digital, but we were asked by the Shambly Committee to duplicate a program that we'd actually done countywide. And we dived into a digital marketing program with Pineapple PR. And this is some of the ads that you can see that we were running, Shambly Dining, the Burgers, Buford Highway, things like that. And we actually brought in 28,495 page views and the top areas that we were bringing people from was Atlanta, Columbus, Miami, Birmingham, Chattanooga. Next, please. Next, please. So I think this is an important page. With the focus going into public relations, communications, articles, if you read a lot of these things, if you're looking at food and wine, garden and gun, Southern Living, travel and leisure, Forbes, you get into TV stations, Fox, Channel 2, AJC, big magazines, USA Today, Atlanta, Southbound. These are articles that have been written about the destination, getting people to want to come, want to spend money, want to stay, want to eat, want to shop. Next article, next page, please. From the public relations results, you can see 10 million plus views, 591 million plus readers. These are people seeing Shambly, seeing our destination. Next, please. You can go on the next one. Funny having these pieces in between when you're not controlling your own computer. So if you look at the digital marketing that we did from March to December, these are some of the shots. Again, we're focusing on outdoor recreation, parks, getting out to where you can be as safe, I guess, as we can be during COVID. All of the research showed outdoor rec and dining was what everybody wanted. So we started diving heavily into this where you can look at 70, almost 75,000 clicks, 3 million plus impressions. Next, please. Website was going more into the outdoor recreation side. And what I find interesting on this page to bring up to you all is Atlanta's number one, that's normal. But Orlando's number two and Orlando's number six, Miami's number six, sorry. The reason that's important is normally Florida is a week, is a winter only area for us going up to go skiing. With COVID, we're the first big city open with Atlanta. So Florida has become a very powerful market, and I've got to really pay tribute to Tim, our chairman from the committee because he brought up people were starting to stay here and we started focusing much more heavily on Florida because normally during the summer or spring and fall, it's not what we would focus on. So we picked up Q from him and you can see where our target of second and sixth is pretty strong. Next, please. And next, please. Okay, if you look at our Facebook, just some quick numbers, this was from March of COVID to now. And followers, we gained 14%, impressions up 40% and reactions up 75%. But what's even more important, you look at Instagram, engagements up 95%. You know, we have 37%, 37% more followers and 310% more impressions. I'm an old guy, so I still think Facebook, but the new, the younger people and even the older people are going to Instagram more, and this, it shows it. Next, please. And this is some of the samples of our Facebook posts. I mean, we've got downtown Shambly, we've, we've got Chinatown and in Buford Highway. Some of the main focuses. Next, please. And this, of course, continues on with more recreation, Buford Highway, beautiful shots. Love the dog. We've got dogs in several pieces. Next, please. Social media ad results, you know, one of the things that, because you all can see this, I don't want to read the whole thing to you, but one of the things is very important is if you cost per click is 39 cents, but the industrial average is a dollar seven. The next one down there, cost per click 24 cents, industrial average 63% 63 cents. So you can see that we're getting, we're getting the exposure and it's costing us a lot less money. Total reach, 883,799 people with 2 million plus impressions. So we definitely see social media as a key to get out there and beautiful pictures and videos is working. Next, please. Looking ahead for two, for 2021, again, we're, we're looking at, I budgeted as a kind of a COVID year because one of the things, if everything increases and does great, it's easy to go in and put your wish list into play. But I didn't want to have another year like last year where I had to go in and slash everything and cut everything. So that's kind of where we're planning. And next, please. If you look at it, we're going to run into calibrate campaign, which is actually trying to get you to recalibrate, rejuvenate, recharge in DeKalb. So we're running a campaign with that focusing heavily on the dining and restaurant scene, still focusing on the outdoor recreation, the arts, culture, dining that you can only get in Shambly, only in DeKalb. So we're very excited about that. And Karen, it seemed like you liked to calibrate. I saw your reactions there. Hopefully you did. So.
That was a cool name.
Well, thank you. And, you know, family reunions is something we're pushing right now, but we understand family reunions is really going to be next year. We're still trying to do our family reunion planning, our family reunion workshops. But we, we've definitely been told that that's next year before it's going to really come back into hitting big. Next, please. This is some of the, as you're to calibrate, you get to see that. Some of the things we're pushing again is outdoors. Get away in your own city, discover our outdoor scene, discover the unexpected. It's going to be heavily for outdoors, heavily for food. Next one. Again, we're looking at hitting the Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Florida, again, Alabama. Again, we're looking at hitting the Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Florida again, Alabama, Tennessee, Virginia, Kentucky. So I'm always talking with my hands, you can't see that. But you know, as we look at things, it's very much the regional area with again, a strong focus on Florida and then looking at staycations, even whether you're a Shambly person for a staycation, Atlanta person for a staycation. And in school groups, we're still iffy about what's going to occur there. We are getting some motor coach groups, but a lot of those are the sports groups coming in by motor coach and we're getting those rooms and we're excited about that. Sports, we do expect to continue growing and, and that's a good sign. Kind of wondering how they're going to be able to do that, but sports is, is starting to rebound and we've had some more tournaments than we expected without a town. So we're looking into being able to start that with a stronger throughout the year as COVID gets better and the vaccines get more prominent. Next, please. We're going to continue the Expedia campaign. If you remember in the very beginning, we talked about a brand new campaign that we started, we're looking at Expedia from January through the spring, cutting it off in the summer when we don't think we're going to need that whatsoever. Starting it back up again in the fall to drive people in, in what we'll call the shoulder season with COVID. So we're going to be going back into that campaign. It's running currently right now. We're just going to extend it more than likely until about the start of summer and then, and then cut it off and then bring it back up again. Next slide, please. And that is it. Ending with our Shambly Gateway mural. And excited to be here. Again, I can't see him, but I know Tim was logging on. So Tim has been an outstanding chair of the Shambly Marketing Advertising Committee and, and we're here if there's any questions.
Great. Thanks, James. Again, same thing unless there's just absolute burning question and see a hand or something from a council member, we, we know how to find you. We really appreciate all the hard work you're doing on our city's behalf. All right, next item. Yep, thanks, James. Next item, we've got under city clerk, we have the approval of the minutes, city council, public hearing work session from January 14.
Motion to approve the minutes from the January 14, 2021 work session meeting as submitted.
Second.
There he goes. There any discussion of this item? We have motion second to approve the minutes that submitted from the public hearing work session, January 14. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I don't know if I heard Brian or not.
Where the boys.
Where is he? Brian. Aye, 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 aye. Aye, 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 aye.
James kind of put me to sleep too, but no, is James still on? Shoot, he is. No, I'm just kidding. All right. So unanimously, you know, I mean, I tell you what, we're just living the COVID dream here. All right. Next item then on the agenda, city council regular meeting, January 19.
Motion to approve the minutes for the January 19, 2021 regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Mesa got the second. But you can still, Karen, that's all right. You didn't have to have. We have motion of second then to approve city council regular meeting minutes as submitted by staff. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 Captain. All right, that passes unanimously. Downtown Development Authority appointments.
Yeah. Motion to punt this to next month to defer.
I, I, I second the punts.
You know, I usually like to go for it instead of punting.
What a safety.
On fourth down and one, we're going to punt. The downtown development appointments deferred those till next month. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye, 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 Captain. All right. So that passes unanimously. The next item is Public Arts Commission appointments.
I make a motion to appoint Susan Todrak to the Public Arts Commission for a term that expires December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Very good. So is there any discussion of this item? Motion second then to appoint Susan Todrak to the term that, that Karen outlined right there. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. I think I'm hearing everybody. I think Brian said aye. So we're going to say he did. All right, that passes unanimously. The next item is strategic planning software.
Take it away, John. Alcoholic beverages, okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it's your.
What did I do? Did I print off? Or something?
No, that was, that was advanced to first read. That's my, my bad.
It was what?
The alcohol was advanced to a first read. So that's my mistake on that slide.
Okay.
Well, you know, alcohol is involved. So there is.
We'll revisit it later.
Just so everybody's clear, nobody is driving here right now. All right. So we are on then under city manager strategic planning software. Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Good. Somebody care to make motion?
Oh. I make a motion to, for the mayor to sign a contract with Invisio for a software to track initiatives and provide reports.
Recommended by staff.
Recommended by staff.
Second.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion of second. Mayor signing a contract having to do with strategic planning software as submitted by staff. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. That passed unanimously. All right. Next item, we have under development department, we have PZ 2020-705, which is 5180 Peachtree Boulevard at all.
Motion to defer this item to the March work session.
There a second? Very good. Is there any discussion of this item? All right, we have motion of second to defer this to the Mark work session. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Uh, let's see, the next item then is PZ 2021-710, which is 3482 Hilton Circle.
Motion to approve with the following conditions. Let me get to that screen. The, the development shall be constructed in substantial conformity with exhibit A site plan updated and dated and received February 1st, 2021 with revisions required by the conditions of approval as reviewed by the planning and development director. Condition two, if the city needs, has need to remove the fence or and or retaining wall to do work in the right way, the city will not be responsible for replacement of the fence and or retaining wall.
Second.
All right. Is there a discussion of this item?
Um. I'm sorry, John. I missed part of what your motion was. Will you please restate it for me?
All right. It said that you want the substantial conformity part, or do you want the other part?
Substantial conformity.
The development shall, the project shall be constructed in substantial conformity with exhibit A site plan dated and received February 1st, 2021 with revisions required by approval as reviewed by the planning and development director.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion of this item? All right, we have a motion of second then to approve with the conditions that council member Mesa just outlined. And we'll give to the city clerk. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. That passes unanimously. All right. The next item then is PZ 2021-711, which is 3723 and 3731 Shambly Dunwoody Road.
Motion to approve as submitted 3723 and 3731 Shambly Dunwoody Road Medical Office Building with the variances as submitted.
Second.
There any discussion of this item? All right, we have motion of second then to approve the, the variances as submitted for 3723 and 3731 Shambly Dunwoody Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right. We have a resolution of support for the Community Development Assistance Program, C-DAP application.
Motion to approve the $10,000 match as the city supports the grant conducted by this community housing and study as recommended by staff.
Second.
Cool. I thought you were going to start making me sing there or something to get everybody's attention. All right. So we have a motion of second support of the resolution for the Community Development Assistance Program application, $10,000 match from the city as submitted by staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, passed unanimously. I, Captain, we got another resolution. But I will hesitate to sing here as well. It's a resolution of support of the Regional Connected Vehicle Program application.
Motion. Motion is supported.
Sorry.
Motion to approve the resolution of support for the Community Development Assistance Program, AKA C-DAP application.
All right.
That's the one we just did.
That's the wrong.
Then why didn't we move on?
They did, they backed up.
For the Regional Connected Vehicle Program application.
That's, that's what I thought. Okay. Can we, can we go there?
Yeah, let's go there.
Thank you. Um.
That ain't it.
I apologize. That, that, that slide seems to be missing from this deck for some reason.
But I've got, I've got some, I got, I got it, I think.
You do.
Motion to support the, motions to approve the resolution of support for the Regional Connected Vehicle Program application as submitted by staff.
Second.
Good. Hey, way to bail us out there. We're all.
Karen, good job, Karen.
Very good. This is a motion to support the resolution in support of the Regional Connected Vehicle Program application as submitted by staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Hey, guys, that is huge. That is absolutely huge. All right. That passed unanimously. Please Parks and Rec F for finance, G for public works, no big star for them. 2021 Resolution to update the schedule of traffic regulations.
Motion to update the resolution, I mean, motion to adopt the resolution to update the 2021 schedule of traffic regulations.
Second.
Oh, there we go. I think, I can't tell. Leslie got the second. All right. So is there any discussion? We have a motion of second then to approve the resolution, update the 2021 schedule of traffic regulations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Economic Development Board, authorities committees, I'm sure everybody is thoroughly bored. There is no authority here. City Attorney Joe, welcome. We're going to let you read that we got, I think, two first reads and three second reads.
That's correct, Mayor. Can everybody hear me well?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. I'm going to read first the alcoholic beverage ordinance. It's basically these changes were made based on House Bill 879, which changed some state statutes regarding local regulation of alcohol. We sort of tightened up our definition of a full service kitchen in part one. Part two outlines the handling permit requirements. Part three, which is section 641, requires licenses for the various types of alcohol permits that we do issue. Part four amends the section 644 concerning criminal history checks on applicants for licenses. Part five concerns distances of alcoholic beverage sales locations from schools, churches and things like that. Part six regulates the hours of sale for retailers. And part seven concerns retail package sales of distilled spirits and allows for tasting events at licensed retail package liquor stores. Part eight, again, amends hours of sale for retail package licensees. Part nine concerns carryout of open alcoholic beverages makes that unlawful in the city. And part 10, retail sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is amended to provide for sales in grocery stores. Part 11 is hours of sale again for retail package licensees. And part 12 gives a severability clause. That is the first reading. No vote required.
Great. Thanks, Joe. I think we got another first read.
That's correct, Mayor. Next is a ordinance to amend the official zoning map. This has a list of parcels. A lot of them are on Catalina Drive. Actually, I think most of them are to change the official map to amend the zoning class. There are all those portions from village commercial to industrial transitional and to provide that those changes be entered on the official zoning map within 30 days after it's approved by the mayor and council, which will be at the next meeting. And the clerk has to put certain language on the, on the zoning map that it was adopted by the council. And that is only the first reading of that ordinance. No vote required.
Very good.
Next is the second reading of our municipal home rule ordinance that we are amending our charter to allow for a quorum of three council members and the mayor or mayor pro temp. This, this is the second reading on that. Once we get our publication affidavit and everything, I'll be sending that to the Secretary of State and to the Clark Speer Court to note that our, that we have changed our charter, which we are allowed to do for these types of things. That is the second reading on that. So we'll need a vote.
Motion to approve the amendment to the charter related to a quorum.
Second.
Oh, I think John Mesa got in there quicker that time. So we have a motion by Brian Mock, second by John Mesa. Is there any discussion? All right, to amend the charter related to a quorum, all those, it's a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Okay. Next ordinance is to amend chapter two administration, article two, time and place of regular meetings. Provide that regular meetings shall be held on the third Tuesday of each month at 7:30. And if any meeting falls on a federal or state holiday, the council may reschedule the meeting and cause to be published the date changed of the meeting. And that is the second reading. Need a vote on that.
Motion to approve the ordinance to update section two dash 46, regular meetings and rescheduling.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion of motions from Brian and second from Karen? To approve the ordinance to update section two, 46, regarding regular meetings and rescheduling of meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. One more, Joe.
Last one, Mayor. This is to amend the code. Article eight, non-driver participation in street racing and reckless driving exhibitions. That's chapter 58, as a number wheres is defines what illegal street racing and reckless driver exhibition means. An organizer is a person defined who plans those types of events. Then you have participants. That's anybody knowingly present at one of these exhibitions for the purpose of actively taking part in it. And there's a race starter definition. I guess that's like a flagman at the Daytona 500. I don't, I'm not sure. Violations and penalties are set forth in section 172 and 173. And there are some exemptions that would be for licensed to do or duly authorized race tracks, drag strips or other designated areas. So aside by the proper authorities for such purposes. And part two is a severability clause. That is the second reading of that ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance for non-driver participation in street racing and reckless driving.
Second.
Once again, Mr. Mesa, so I got Brian Mock with the motion. John Mesa with the second. Is there any discussion? All right. So the motion then was to approve the non-driver participation in street racing and reckless driving exhibitions as read by the city attorney. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. All right. So big star for all the mayor and council except Mr. Mock, because he wants to go tackle door to door.
So.
He's actually going to tackle them, is that?
I get a little start.
The guy that was.
Tackling, not punching.
In the Super Bowl, yeah. You punt, he tackles. I'm just going to wave the flag at the Daytona.
Roll tide.
All right, y'all. So I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to look at our door to door solicitation ordinances and see how that we may tighten those up. As I mentioned last week, we've had some, we've had some problems with folks out knocking on doors at nine o'clock at night. This is not part of the motion, but just, just so I remind you of why we're doing this. And some folks have gotten scared and, and there's been some slight altercation. So direct, direct staff to come back to us next month with, with some suggested ordinance changes for door to door solicitation.
Is there a second?
Second.
That would be Karen, man. She's getting quick.
Oh.
You guys are gonna have to get top of your game now. All right. So, uh, uh, Brian made a motion to, uh, to direct staff to come back next month. With them updates to our door to door solicitation amendments, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Karen seconded that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. That passes unanimously. This will be back again next month. All right. I will ask our city clerk, do we have anybody that has been any messages to be read for citizen comment this evening?
Mayor, we do not.
Very good. All right. Mr. Walker, do we have an executive session this evening?
We do not.
Wow.
Ooh, look at us.
Someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion of second to adjourn. I don't think anybody wants to discuss, but I'll ask anyway. Discussion, no good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. We are adjourned. Once again, I will thank everyone for their patience in putting up with us during these, uh, trying times and having to conduct meetings in this manner. We'd all much rather see each other in person. Uh, we will get to that point at some time and I want to thank our rock star staff for, uh, allowing us to be able to conduct our meetings in this way. They've. They've really gone above and beyond, so we really appreciate them. So with that, we're adjourned. We can, um, we can all go home now.
This is actually nice. Like I can see your faces better than when we're in the penalty boxes. So it's actually kind of, it has an advantage.
All right. Well, I'm.
So I'm saying, good night.
You all.
Good night.
Enough.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.